Okay, Madam Mayor, the floor is yours.
Thank you. I'd like to welcome everyone to our scheduled city council meeting this evening, April 13, 2021. At this time, I'd like to call the meeting to order and ask for a roll call.
Okay. Mayor Bennett?
Here.
Vice Mayor Pardon?
Here.
Counselor Randolph?
Here.
Counselor Holloway?
Here.
Counselor Gore? Counselor Gore? Counselor Denton?
Here.
Counselor Palam?
Present.
Mayor Bennett, you have a quorum, six present, one absent.
Thank you. At this time, I'd like to ask if there is a motion to go into closed meeting?
I move that we go into closed meeting pursuant to Virginia Code, Sections 2.2-3711A1 to discuss and consider personnel matters, including the recruitment and appointment of a city clerk. And to the extent these discussions will be aided thereby, A4 for the protection of the privacy of individuals and personal matters not related to public business.
Second.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Pardon, submitted by Counselor Palam. Discussion. I see no hands. Roll call.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Palam?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Randolph?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pardon?
Yes.
And has Counselor Gore joined yet?
No, ma'am.
Okay. Mayor Bennett, you have the motion passed, 620.
Thank you. And if Mr. Altman and Ms. Robinson can, I will message you via phone, through text, to join us in closed session. And just await that. Thank you.
Consetta?
Yes, ma'am.
I can't get in to close. Would you send me the link, Zoom link, to my email where you send the regular meeting Zoom link?
Sure will.
Thank you, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Talking about a little small, real small black, uh, fine juice, uh, dick.
But they're.
Janice.
Janice.
Yes.
We can hear everything that Coco and Weasel are saying on their conversation.
Okay, thank you.
Yes ma'am.
But that's your work, okay?
Yeah.
Okay, okay.
I'd like to welcome everyone back. Is there a motion to come out of closed meeting?
So moved.
Second.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor. Counselor Pelham. Roll call.
Counselor Denton. Counselor Denton. Can you hea- Can you hear me? Hello?
Yes, we can hear you.
Okay, sorry, um.
At least she's muted.
That's right, Counselor Denton's not here, my apologies. Counselor Pelham.
Denton's here.
That's right, Gore came in late, sorry, I'm looking at last week. Um, let me start again. Counselor Denton.
Somebody say she's muted.
Yep.
Counselor Denton, can you unmute? Okay, Counselor Pelham.
Yes.
Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Counselor Randolph.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton. Okay, uh, Mayor Bennett, you have six yes and one no answer, motion passes.
Yeah, thanks.
Do you read certification?
Yes. Certification pursuant to Virginia Code two point two dash three seven one two D. Were only public business matters, one, lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, and two, identified in the closed meeting motion discussed in closed meeting. Counselor Denton. Counselor Pelham.
Yes.
Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Counselor Randolph.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Counselor Denton. Mayor Bennett, you have seven to zero, motion passes.
Thank you. Is there a motion to appoint Ms. Molly Best as the acting city clerk?
So moved.
Second.
I'm sorry, who said the second?
Ms. Pelham.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Parton, seconded by Counselor Pelham. Roll call.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Pelham.
Yes.
Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Counselor Randolph.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yeah.
Vice Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Thank you all very much.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate everyone being here this evening. At this time, I, we're running a little late, but we would like to turn over this time to have our work session. Um, Ms. Tavia Griffin.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
The work session this evening is, uh, one that council wanted, not, Mrs. Not Mrs. Griffin's issue.
Actually, is the boards and commissions the request that I had before?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Do you want me to present, Madam Chair?
It would be great. Thank you, Counselor Gore.
All right, so, um, I don't have controls of the screen, so can we please, uh, move to the boards and commission information in the packet? Um, I'll start with the opener. The goal of this request is to see if council will review our boards and commissions list, um, to clean it up in a sense of making sure that we have active boards currently listed. The boards that we have listed are relevant, meaning they actually meet, they have a purpose. Um, but then also to finish a project I started with the website committee to have a way for the boards and commissions vacancies and members to be posted on the state's website. Uh, for the public, I did bring this up, but I think back in February, and the opinion of council was to do a work session as opposed to taking action that night, so this is the work session that was requested. Moving to the next page, uh, just to give some background on the boards and commissions, there was initial scrub in two thousand and nineteen to, uh, ensure that all of the verbiage for the website, um, was updated to provide, uh, accurate information about what the boards and commissions were, um, what was the authority that established them. Um, but then also to scrub to make sure we had all of our current members included. And do you need, need to share the screen, or do you want to share the screen? Okay. Um, I'll share the screen since it's not being shown. Hopefully everyone can see that. Um, at the time, uh, I asked, well, the website committee, as I shared before, had already had a goal to make the website more interactive, hence we have a new website, we have Council Live, Munich Code, and some other features. But one other goal was to, uh, provide a way for residents to be able to know who are the m- members of Cornbirds and Commissions, but then also to see what the vacancies were, so that way they could, if they were interested in a board, they knew that there was a vacancy for, that they could apply for. Um, again, about in two thousand and nineteen, the goal was to start working on that project. If you go to the state's website right now, you will see that there is a tab that has boards and commissions information, it does list members, it does provide a snapshot. Um, and that in, information was provided after we did the scrub. So the last goal was to actually find a way to integrate it with the IT department. Uh, there was different ideas tossed around, um, between nineteen and twenty, but nothing really came into fruition. Uh, for the clerk's office to work with the IT department to ensure that information was updated, but then also look at the website to see if there's widgets and plugins that we can use to be able to have that information relayed in real time. And so basically, um, I, I wanted council to look at the boards and commissions and to see if, uh, starting off, if there was any that we can share that we needed to possibly, um, reconsider. And so hopefully on my screen, everyone can see, I just clicked the page that I just referenced in terms of adding it to the website. Um, before this information was not listed, so you can see, we have the boards here. We have the purpose of the board. We have when they meet. And the membership scope.
Um, are you saying you already added this to the website?
It was done in two thousand and nineteen. Yes, it's already there. And so what I was sharing is the next step was to integrate this into a, um, system that the vacancies would be listed, and then the new members, once they're appointed, would be shown on the website. And that's kind of where we left off, and I did bring this to council, but at the time I didn't get any interest. Um, but I know that there's interest now into finalizing this, so hopefully we can get something in place to be able to have this information updated in real time for the public to be able to know how they can engage in their local government. So this information is currently on the state's website. Um, so just a quick scrub for council, um, the purpose of the conversation, the architecture review board, we know they're meeting, we know they're active. Um, and looking at the list and going in order, I would like to see if council would like to, and again, I did preference this when I brought this to council the first time, um, to see if there's any other boards or commissions that we would need to either, uh, reconsider or re- or remove. Um. So I guess we can start from there, that's one goal for today's work session.
But I have my hand up, so are you, are you able to see hands or not?
Um, I don't have that up on her. Yes, go ahead.
Um, as you know, that on the CCRs, I have this some request after our interviews of the end of last year and the beginning of January. I, uh, talked to IT about having a particular software that Munis provides would give us the integration. It would not be something that would be on the website, and it could be something that, uh, and I believe Ms. Best has also started working on this, I was told, um, with, everything, but, um, because of so many CCRs ahead of mine, even though I put it out there and I gave council or had, um, give council a quick overview of the cost and the information provided, getting it on a CCR has taken this long, and we still haven't gotten to it.
So respectfully, Counselor Randolph, are you trying to talk about your CCR during the presentation?
I am simply saying that it is there, and that there is something that is available other than our website that would be integrated into the website and would be available.
Yes, um, I'm fully aware that I provided them with the information so they can get the ball rolling, um, to start implementing the, the system. So I'm aware that that is underworks, and you know, again, this is a project that actually started before you were a counselor, um, and we started working on actually doing some of the changes, like I said, in nineteen, putting this on the website. So I'm glad that you're on board with trying to find a way to integrate and have the information available for the public. But for the purpose of the work session, so we don't get derailed, so Counselor, Counselor Randolph, respectfully.
Thank you very much, I appreciate you letting me.
All right.
Thank you, I'm done.
Thank you. So picking up where the first ask of council is, where I, I did ask for council to participate, um, so we can get through the work session. The ask was to see if, looking at our current list of boards and commissions, if there is something that we may want to remove, and then the next question I have for council was to think about boards and commissions that we could add. So right now, I'm just at the point of seeing where we might want to remove because they may not be needing, and that's why I have the list on the screen. Um, I do see Mayor Bennett has her hand raised, um, for discussion.
Yes, thank you. Um, thank Counselor Gore, I have a, my only question, I'm going to pull this up because I want to.
And just for clarity, the ethics committee and the finance committee needs to be removed because we haven't formalized them officially the proper way. Um, but again, when there was a changeover in the clerk's office, this project kind of halted, so it does need to be cleaned up.
Okay, so, um, with this, uh, boards and commissions and authorities, what, so my, these are my only questions. Move, you know, what the plan moving, going forward is, and I know that the goal is to improve the opportunities for residents to hope one strategic partners. The objective, I see what the objective is, and my question is, with this program, you know, because we have like turnovers and, you know, people are leaving, what do, where do you see this, uh, who would have this responsibility?
So the clerk's office actually is the person, the office charged with managing council's boards and commissions appointments.
So it'll be the, the city clerk?
Mm-huh.
Okay, and then, um, you're the, what you would have, and it says it'll be for advertisement, so when we advertise, if I was a, I'm a constituent and I want to volunteer, I'd come down to the, and I'd click on the C Architecture Review Board. Oh, can you click on that?
Yeah. One second.
The.
Okay.
Okay. Um, can you scroll down, um, because I want to start from the beginning. And I want to see, you know, all the way up, I mean, the, yeah, like when I first click on it.
Okay, that's the beginning.
Means and, it's, uh, it meets the fourth Monday of every month, and you know, it gives you a snapshot, the staff and the members, and you, uh, and it'll say probably, hey, look, there's a vacancy, but you're, scroll up and it'll tell you a membership, right?
Mm-huh.
And it gives you a snapshot of the purpose, hey, this is something I may be interested in.
Mm-huh.
Uh, then what?
So that's a part of what, my goal is to try to clean up the, so to, I think maybe I can answer your question, so, uh, the goal would be to, one, start adding the minutes from these boards to their page, so that way people can know what they're doing. Um, that also holds some accountability, so that council can know at their meeting, because as you are aware, um, I've asked several times for us to send out a letter to the boards and commissions that are, are pretty much inactive. Um, but that would help add another layer of accountability if we add their minutes to their section, just like we add minutes to our website. But then also, this should be updated, in my opinion, at the bottom under purpose, to have a, a link that says, uh, completed a TBR, um, the Talent Bank resume, and if you recall, you know, council just supported doing online. Um the Talent Bank resume. And if you recall, you know, council just supported doing online forms. Right now, a Talent Bank resume is a fillable PDF, and that was a change from last year before it was uh just a flat out PDF. Um the former clerk did make that fillable. So right now, we could actually link that to here and they have a fillable PDF, which is better than just downloading and printing it. But the goal would be um to have an online form uh attached to each of these, that way they can just go ahead and fill out the TBR um while they're on the page if they're interested in volunteering.
Okay, so I like that. Um I'm gonna ask you, when you stated that, I like the fact that, you know, you have the the minutes, right? But who's gonna have the role of uploading the minutes?
So um.
You, they go to the city clerk, I believe?
So the way that, and I don't know, and Dr. Maker will probably have to jump in. When we first did the revision of the website, um I recall uh like one person from each department being able to have access to update their section. Um and they got trained on it. Um so I don't know if that is the current layout or if it goes through IT, but I know that uh the former clerk did have access to make adjustments um if she wanted to. So the question would be for council, if we wanted to go the route of putting minutes on here, would you want the clerk to do it or would you want the staff liaison that's associated with each board and commission to be responsible for doing that? And the reason why I would throw that in there is because that also adds another layer of accountability. Um because the staff liaison should be ensuring that their minutes prepared is given to council. Um so that would help with that, closing the circle on that part. But I will defer to council and um before we do that, I will ask uh Dr. Maker to answer, just to verify if I um have that mixed up, if that's still the layout.
Yes, ma'am. Um Madam Mayor, may I answer the question?
Oh, yes, please. That's a.
Uh Madam Mayor and members of um council, to answer the question that um Counselor Gore has, um the current the current layout, um the IT department is really in charge of this commission and boards page. Um when we get down to um Counselor Randolph's discussion point, um there are, there is new software available that will allow this particular page to be integrated into um the boards and commission and be handed off to the clerk so she can manage it um without the added requests of allowing um IT department to actually um manage this page. And so I believe the new software will would would run a whole lot smoother smoother for you guys. And when we get to that session um for the presentation, we can walk through what that would look like. But at this moment, as it stands, um the IT department is responsible for updating this page and including the forms on it.
You're right, because I forgot, we had to do help desk tickets. That's with the system that we had established to make sure it was being updated.
So it would have to be a a person, right now, it would have to been a person that was updating it, but then with the new software, kind of be like AI, artificial intelligence?
No, the new software just hands off the the entire process to um whoever's in charge of managing it. And it also is um will be citizen facing, which means um citizens will know, you know, which boards and commissions are now available. And the application will be online, embedded and integrated into the site, which will allow them to apply um to the many different positions.
And the TBRs would actually, the that, that uh tab um either Councilor or.
So what you see is just flat at this moment, like this page is just flat. That information has uh that the web developer just takes those requests and and update it as someone requests the the information.
But future, looking forward, what this page is actually going to look like, it's gonna have the option to um the option. Also have TBRs to apply, right?
It'll be interactive.
Okay, be an interactive page.
Yeah, it'll be acceptable. Yeah, it'll be in, yes, it'll be interactive. So again, you know, just making sure everyone's on the same page. When we first started this, Dr. Maker was first like brand new to the city. And we already had a website committee established. Um I do want to thank her publicly and uh Mr. Lark because they created this page and helped us with the clerk's office to get the information on there. The goal was to just simply post if there was vacancies or not and have that be interactive. But now that time has passed, there is a software that can make it be pretty much um front-facing users so that the citizens can be able to uh see what they're interested in and then also apply. And the electronic form will go to the responsible party, which would hopefully be the clerk to process and bring back to council.
Yeah, that is the software that I presented to. Doctor Manker earlier this year, and now I've got it on the agenda under a CCR to vote on it and pay for it and get it.
Yeah, I'm I'm glad that you're building off of previous work. Um so I'm glad when we get to your CCR, you can announce it. Um I'm just answering the chair's question.
We can through this.
I don't understand. Counselor, can you please just stop? There's nothing to be upset about. We all support this idea. Can you just be, can you calm down, please? Counselor Randolph, can you please calm down so we can do the work?
I don't need you to tell me to calm down.
Adam Chair, can you please have her calm down so we can go to?
That we are gonna go over the software and show everybody.
But Counselor Randolph, we are in a work session right now and the mayor is asking a question. She asked if Dr. Maker and I could answer. And you keep interrupting for whatever reasons. So can you please calm down and do the work session? Chair, did that answer your question?
I'm gonna fi, I'm gonna finish. The reason why, the reason why I asked um you, Counselor Gore, to go through this uh page is to give me a a visual idea on what it's gonna look like, not only to myself. On also to those who are actually watching. I am a visual person. And I would like to know, hey, look, if I open this, what am I gonna see? How is it gonna help me? And since I'm on the back end and I also know, you know, with being on, understanding what the clerk has to do, how would that actually um affect, you know, her job duties? What she has to do in. And you know, all these functions apply, but as a citizen, that would actually help. This is actually really helpful to see where it's gonna be placed. Hey, I'm gonna click on this. I'm gonna read the snapshot. Hey, you know what? This is something I'm really interested in. I'm interested in an architecture review board. And um yeah, so thank you for answering my question.
No problem. Thank you for asking. And so uh if council decides to move forward with the software that is gonna be suggested later, obviously, the layout will work, will change. But the purpose of the work session, again, was to see if we could uh encourage people to apply for boards and commissions, but also look at um which ones we have. So to uh Mayor Bennett's point, um this is still good exercise because people don't even know that this is here on the website and that they could currently look at openings right now. And then also see if they're interested to serve on a board. So thank you for asking that question. Um I do have more to ask, add, but Counselor Pelham, you have your hand raised as well. You're muted.
I'm sorry. I I think you answered my question when you said that we should contact the members to see, thank them for their service and their patience, and we just need to know who's still interested in the board. And then if they're not, we have to let them know that they have to reactivate themselves. And it's just um the the accountability hasn't been there. And I think Mr. City Manager, can you respond to say, is there enough staff to that is appointed to each one of these? Do you have staff that you know of that will be able to serve on each one of these committees? Or boards or commissions?
Some of them, we already have uh staff on.
Like the DOT Commission.
The DOT Commission, uh the Harbor Master by code is the police chief.
Right.
Uh the Board of Equalization, the Assessor Staffs. ECA, Mrs. Griffin. Um you do have the the NPO on here, which I think is just a council appointment of, I think Mrs. Pelham serves on the NPO for us right now.
Yes, uh the former clerk put put councils, standing committees on here. So again, that's what I was saying. If I get the opportunity to separate those out, the public should know which boards that we serve on, but it shouldn't be mixed in here. So where the citizens think that's something that they can serve on. And then the standing committees that have not actually been officially established should be removed until we do so. But Counselor Pelham, to your point, when we did the scrub, um all of the council, this Hopewell committees have a staff representative uh already assigned to them. That works.
And then I would, I would agree that they're the person that should be actually responsible for writing up the minutes and giving them to the city clerk so that she then can post them to wherever they're supposed to go and be a part of our packets. And that we'll be more knowledgeable about what happens in their meetings without have to worry. I mean, oh, we always have to call the city manager or someone else to give us feedback, but it's it's another way of keeping up with stuff.
Yeah, it's added to our packets, but it'd be nice for the public to view. Um Ms. Best?
No, no, I haven't seen minutes for a whole bunch of these things.
A whole bunch of them. Don't submit minutes. No, they don't. Yes, Ms. Best?
Yes, um I just wanted, Counselor Gordon, I know you reached out to me before the meeting to get some information and um I made you aware that I was working on it. So I have contacted, just FYI for all of you, a lot of these uh boards and commissions to, because some of them are very inactive and some of them don't have members and that it's not been kept up with. So I've reached out to a whole lot of them and and Debbie has actually um he helped me with that. Um Debbie Pershing has actually helped me with that. So I do have some information on some of these that I'm more than happy to uh forward on to you. And I've been working on an Excel spreadsheet to kind of do some tracking and some filters. But I'm not sure, after seeing this, if that is even needed, because this seems like it's gonna do pretty much what my spreadsheet was going to do.
I I would say continue with your project and just share with council whenever you're ready. Um okay, thank you for that and your uh for working on this. And you know, I just, I I just don't want to say, get, you know, one, thank you for effort. And I look forward to seeing what you uncover. Um but for council, for example, the reason why I'm asking for us to look at really, if we want to dismantle some boards because they serve no purpose. Um like we've talked about the Beacon Theater before, that was two years ago. There is no, there's no need for them to be a a board uh because the tax credits is over. Um the DOT Commission, we tried to revive that. No one is really needing.
That's a legal, that's a state required board commission, I believe. Has something to do with a state requirement, doesn't it? For the.
There's legislation on it, it that it was, something happened in the last General Assembly with a firearm being removed from the Harbor Master, but I that would have to defer to Ms. Robinson. But I'm just saying that if we could scrub like the Historic Preservation Committee, they haven't met in how, I don't know how long. Um is there a need for that board? Um so that's what I'm saying, that we should really scrub this to see if there's something that we can do away with. But then on the flip side, you know, we have an opportunity to look at trying to revive our board's list to see if there is a new committee that we can establish for citizens to serve on and be a part of their local government. Um is there something that we can do and related to health? Is there something that we can do um related to, I mean, any topic. Uh and the other point of what I I will hope, was hoping that we would get to tonight, but the conversation really went off base is to look at what the committees currently do. Um what's the purpose of having committees if we don't understand what their purpose is and their scope? So for example, um we know the KHB, Keep Hopeful Beautiful Meets, they do trash pickups, but uh and some other projects, but that's kind of different than what the committee is established to do. Okay, that's fine. Things have changed over time. Is that the direction that we want the board to go in? Uh do you want to change the purpose of it so it matches what their current mission is? Uh same thing with the, I mean, pick any board and the question will be, how are they contributing to our local government? Is there a project that they can help us work on? For example, do you want to establish a housing committee? Um maybe they can help us with our housing survey. You know, let's think about why we have these boards. Uh do they serve a purpose? Um that's helping us advance Hopewell. And if not, should we think about uh redesigning it or getting rid of it? And then secondly, should we just look at establishing new committees for people to be a part of their government? Um so I, my hope was to talk about that today, but like I said, the conversation shifted, but you get the gist of it. So um I would ask council for the sake of time, um if I can continue to work on this uh and bring to another work session with some more feedback from counselors. And then to the last point, I'll say uh uh Chair Bennett, Mayor Bennett had um mentioned advertising. The other part I had in the presentation was to say that I I believe that we should look at um doing active advertising to solicit applications. Um I know that individually, we may reach out to people, which is great. People come to us sometimes, which is great. But as a city, we should be marketing that we have boards and commissions for people to apply. We should have a post on our social media. Um the clerk's office is supposed to do an advertisement in September um that hasn't been done in recent years. And so um to work on a marketing plan, um again, in two thousand and nineteen, I did put this on the agenda. Council did support. I mean, working on a flyer. I did do the draft flyer, but it was never disseminated. So I would like to circle back to that uh to to get something um pushed out to the public so they can know um how to participate. And the reason why I believe this is critical is because uh we need to have diversity in our boards and commissions. Um we keep appointing the same people to the same boards. Uh we appoint the same people to various multiple boards. So it's the same voice circling and and critical positions. Um and then also, it's just, this helps with apathy with the community, not feeling like they're a part of what's going on to Hopewell. So I think we need to make a conscious decision to do something different. And I believe especially with going up, what's going on with COVID in our community, that we need to really take this seriously and be creative. So uh council supports that. I would like to put another work session on um after meeting with council to get your feedback and then give some of the results and what Ms. Best has collected. And I think Ms. Pelham had her hand raised and then Counselor Anna had her hand raised.
Oh, I mean, mine's not raised. I'm sorry. Mine's not raised.
Okay, Counselor Randolph.
Um no, I do not support you working on this by yourself. I think that all of council can benefit to understand every board and commission on here. So I would like to have all of us work on this, especially since you mentioned that the Historic Preservation Committee is not meeting. That is not accurate. That is a new board that we have set up last year. And I, Ms. Ms. um Denton and I are on it. And Ms. Griffin and the team have been meeting regularly. And we could not get a quorum for the last meeting. However, uh that's because they're holding them at four o'clock in the afternoon. So um I think that all of us could benefit on council and should benefit on council to know what every single one of these boards and commissions is doing. So my suggestion is that we work on it in work sessions or however, but that we all do it together to learn and take maybe the first ten, go through them, go to the next ten, whatever. And at that same time, then we can make a decision if there are other boards and commissions that we need versus not need. And that way, it'll all be uh something we're working on together and not separately. Thank you.
You're welcome. So just to repeat what I stated, I said to bring this back as another work session for council to participate. So to answer your your statement, I've already suggested that. Um in addition, I said to bring back the information um that from feedback from council and what Ms. Best has, will be finishing compiling to put in a work session. So there is your inclusion. If it's on, I I didn't interrupt you. I didn't interrupt you. Um and then if it's on a work session, then obviously council will be doing it as a team. So all checkboxes are there. All have been suggested already. Um and just for a point of reference, we do boards and commission appointments every two year for city council. Um and so, you know, obviously, we did the Historic Preservation Committee two years ago, not last year. Um, and so, you know, obviously, we did the Historic Preservation Committee two years ago, not last year. And clearly not having minutes, we didn't know that they were actually active. So again, my suggestion is to, um, take the feedback from counselor, councils, uh, council members about which boards and commissions they think are inactive or suggestions that they would like to see in terms of, um, opportunities for us to expand or revise. I can consolidate that information, um, and also include Ms. Best's information if she can present it out during a work session. But to bring all that back to everyone, um, in a work session for us to go through, uh, and review. And that is the request I made when I started this, um, and that's still the request on the floor. So if there's any objections to that from more than one counselor, um, I would like to proceed with this project. And then also to come back with the flyer, um, again, to see if we can disseminate that to the public with your approval. Um, Mayor Bennett?
Yes, um, when do you suggest, you have a suggested time when you wanted to bring this back as a work session? How much time do you think you need to come back to council?
Uh, for me, um, honestly, it depends on you guys. I know we have, we're going into budgetary sessions. So it will have to go with the date that, uh, C manager thinks that we're gonna be free. Um, but for me, it's just getting feedback from you all after scrubbing the list. Um, and then I can consolidate that. And then the other part of that is Ms. Best. I know she's working on her project, so quite frankly, um, I would say, and then two weeks or a month will be fine with me. A month might be better to make sure that Ms. Best has all her information. But if she's comfortable within two, three weeks, then we can do that then. But I'll defer to Ms. Best. Um, when do you think you might have your scrub done?
Um, I would like to go with the month. I possibly could have it done before then, but I'd need to make this a priority over other things, which I certainly can do. I, I would, I, I would feel comfortable with a month.
A month is good. That gives everyone time to, um, that gives everyone time to get their feedback in. And then, um, scrubbing what Ms. Best has, and then I can put it together, pack it to bring back to council for a work session and everybody, you know, give their feedback and then we make decisions as a group and then we move forward. So a month is fine for me.
So what we can actually
The CCR tonight.
So what we can I guess what we can actually do, even, even if we did talk about, um, what would the work session be? Like what would, what would the work session incorporate if we were to do another work session?
Okay, so when I say this, I'm not being sarcastic and again, I'm sorry, but you know, the conversation shifted, uh, to their earlier outbursts. But the, the goal would be to take the, everyone's feedback in regard to the boards and commissions they feel like we can do without. Then review that, then to take everyone's feedback about, let's say, there's a board of commission, they feel like the purpose has shifted and we should make some adjustments then to do that. And then alert third thing would be if someone has any suggestions about, um, opportunity to establish a new board, then we should decide that. And then lastly, end with talking about, um, distributing some type of marketing or outreach flyer. Um, I will have a draft prepared to you like I did before, um, and council can approve it. And then once it approved, hopefully Ms. Bass will be the one to, um, work with IT to get that posted online and then we'll be good to go. And then if we use the software, um, that's on a discussion for later on this evening, then that information will be ready to go into the software as opposed to us just dumping what needs to clearly be scrubbed.
Okay, so, um, that sounds like a streamlined, that looks like a streamlined, um, uh, work session. I think that with our next, what is our next, uh, in a month look like? Can anybody, my calendar, my computer has not updated. So everything is in, um, Chinese on my calendar. I don't know why, on my Outlook calendar. And, um, Dr. Mankur can tell you, attest to that. Because I didn't have my computer updated. So can anyone please look at the, their calendar and tell me when was be the next uh, council meeting?
Mr. Ottman, can you jump in? Cause you wanna make sure it matches with your budget stuff.
Well, so, um, a couple of things. One, when council adjusts its rules, you said you wanted to do work sessions once a month, which is the second meeting of the month. So we've got one scheduled for the twenty-seventh with Mrs. um, Griffin on a conditional use permit request for the twenty-seventh. So then the next meeting would be the twenty-fifth of May where you would have one unless you wanted to adjust that, cause I think y'all wanted to do closed once a month, work sessions the other months, uh, other times. So you could start at six thirty.
Okay, and what's the next one?
The next one will be the twenty-fifth, which would be more than a month, but that would probably give everybody ample time to get everything done.
So May twenty-fifth? Is that a month?
It's a, it's about six.
Would that be the next open work session?
Yes, ma'am.
We don't have anything else in queue for work session.
I said that.
Uh, we just got a message that the rule hasn't changed. But I'm fine with whatever vacancy, as long as best is comfortable.
Mayor, I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
Um, I don't mind us doing another work session, but if the actuality is that we can't well, what is being asked of us is to look to decide what boards and com- commissions are not needed. How would we know that since many of them do not put minutes in? And it was mistakenly said that the Historic Preservation Committee, because we don't put minutes in, was act- not active. So if council doesn't know that, how are we gonna be able to really understand whether a board's active or not and doesn't need to be there?
That's gonna take the, the month research, that's the research process that we're gonna take. And that's the reason why we're gonna come back to the next meeting.
Right, but who's doing the research?
Ms. Best already said that she was doing it.
Yeah, I have done, I have sent out emails and made calls to not all of them, but a majority of the boards and commissions.
So we're gonna get that information from Ms. Best to help us understand what, who are actively meeting now.
And you know, and not to say that we are gonna get all of that information, because there might be, we might not be able to get all of that information by the next meeting. But here's the thing. That's a step in the right direction. We have to do something or we're gonna keep on having, we're, we're gonna continue to get this gap, you know? Maybe we'll just do two, find out we don't need two. Maybe we'll just need, find out we don't need three. But if we continue to take steps in this direction, hey, we'll find out that.
I have no problem with that. I just had suggested the other way because some, some of what Counselor Gore had indicated was a good idea. Look at their definitions to see if they're still actively doing what they should be doing. Who's doing that? Ms. Best isn't doing that, is she?
So I, it's a, it's a shared responsibility. So I said a couple of times for council to take the time out, because these are council-appointed boards and commissions. No disrespect to Ms. Best, but she's seeing who is active and who is not active and making sure we have members, the membership right. But that's council's decision about if the, if the people that they appointed are fulfilling the mission for a board that they appoint to people to serve on. So again, um, it's ample time for everyone to do their scrub to see if there's questions or to get their opinion. And then again, Ms. Best can be here to provide a reference. Some of these things have legal, uh, uh, regulations, like for example, when we did the scrub in two thousand and nineteen for all of the boards and commissions, Transportation Committee, it was not supposed to have any staff serving on it. Every member minus one was staff. We addressed that with council. Council have corrected that. Another example is you cannot serve on the, um, fire board and I think it was the, um, BZA, we adjusted that. And so, uh, finish my sentence, please. So again, council can look at this. And if you have questions, you have staff that can help answer your question. And you bring. Each one of us will be doing this separately. That makes no sense to me. That's why I said. Well, the goal was to do it tonight, Councilor Randolph, but you kept doing outbursts and shifted the purpose of the meeting. So the date that we were talking about, again, the date, I think we were talking about.
I want, I want to, let's, 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 let's come back here together. Let's come back together. The next, um, work session, since that rule does not apply, does, that's not a rule. The next time that we meet in a, in a month, let's, let's do the twenty-fifth. Right? Let's give it the twen- twenty-fifth. Let's give ourselves. I'm sorry.
Is it May you're talking about? May twenty-fifth?
May, May twenty-fifth, okay. Now, this is, this is two things, separate things, right? That's what, um, Councilor Gore just said. We're, they're, they're two separate things. We're gonna come back and we're gonna see where we are.
Get your feedback?
Yes. Get everyone's feedback, where we are, you know, if we didn't get, if we didn't grasp all the, uh, the commissions. Just gonna see where we are, okay? Uh, and it, it shouldn't take long. And, um.
How are we gonna do that? What is it exactly that you want us to do for the twenty-fifth? Decide which boards and commissions we need or don't need?
The goal is for, okay, go ahead, um, Councilor Gore.
It's okay, um. So the goal is for every member of council who wishes to participate to review the boards and commissions list to see number one, which boards they feel like we can do without. Step two, to see if in their opinion, based off of their research and what is provided, if a board and commission's mission can be adjusted. The third goal would be to see if there is an opportunity to establish a new board. Meeting each individual member of council, if you have a board that you feel like would be beneficial to deceive Hopewell, to share that during the work session. And the fourth goal would be to review a draft flyer. I'll probably give the one that I gave last time to see if council would like to support using that as a template to advertise or make changes so that way we can agree on something to share with the public. Will we given the information from Ms. Best in the packet or maybe in advance, depending on when she gets done? So that way you can see where her scrub is in advance of the meeting. And she'll be present to hopefully answer questions and comments.
Okay, so in advance is going to make more sense since, since all of us do not know enough about all of the boards and commissions and whether they're active enough. And if Ms. Best is checking that, then we probably need that information to help. And if each one of us, all seven of us are going to do investigations, we're gonna be worrying the hell out of people for the same questions the whole time. That's all I'm saying.
Respectfully, and I'm not saying investigate call of staff, the boards and commissions should be reporting to us in every single agenda packet. The council rules say boards and commissions are supposed to report to us monthly. If council recalls, when I was mayor, I asked for council to support having that be initiated so that way we can make sure that they report out to us. That was never followed through by the Clerk's Office. So the point I'm trying to say is we don't need to really dig deep and investigate, because clearly that's what Ms. Best is doing. But you know which boards and commissions we receive minutes on. You know which boards and commissions are not active. And maybe you have questions, then just ask a question. And, and, and the part, and the point that I'm trying to say is the fact that people don't know that is the problem. We should know if people are active, because we should be getting minutes. We should be getting understanding. We should be knowing what they're doing. The fact that we're having this conversation because we don't know is precisely the problem. Madam Chair, does anybody else have anything to provide? We see other hands raised, so we can move on from the work session.
Remind council and that we are doing this to streamline the process and we're doing this for our citizens. And, you know, to, and to get them involved, right? And this work session, thank you, Councilor Gore, this is a great work session. You know, whatever has happened before and their, their, um, Councilor Randolph, you, you bring up great questions and great, um, concerns about, hey, how many, how many chiefs do we have? You know, how many people are gonna be asking the commissions this? Um, but, you know, we, there, there are always gonna be problems and issues. And there's always gonna be kinks when we try to find a process or try to do something. Try to do something or find a better process. There's always gonna be kinks. But if we don't try, we're never gonna get to a place where we can get better. So I just want everyone to take that into account. Thank you for this work session. I appreciate everyone, but at this time, I would like us to move on. I would like to also ask, is.
I can have my hand raised forever.
Me too.
Well, this is, um.
It's a quick comment.
You know what? This is, this is Counselor Gore's work session. So she's gonna call on hands as she, as she, um, at, you know, at her pleasure. Thank you.
Thank you, uh, council. This is meant to be an activity for us to try to do something as a team. I thank the chair for her comments. Truthfully, it's not intended, nor should it be, um, as complicated or convoluted as it's sounding. Quite frankly, I am not gonna pick up the phone to call staff to see if a board is active. I'm gonna go through my understanding and what I've seen as a counselor to make an opinion and wait for Ms. Best to send her information. She said she's working on it. We'll get that information. We have a month. So you will get it in advance of the meeting. If it's not done in advance of the meeting and it causes a complication, we can always adjust. But really, you know, this is just the opportunity for us to try to give feedback so we can make this better. Um, Counselor Denton and then Counselor Pelham and then, uh, hopefully we can just move on and agree to do the work session on the twenty-fifth. I wanna thank Ms. Best for working on this.
Very quick, very quick. I noticed on the list that we have on our screen that you have a lot on here, but you also have some of the standing committees of council. Are you gonna separate those out?
Yes, ma'am. So I shared that, that, uh, that we, we kinda stopped this project when the clerk, um, left. So the goal is to separate it out, um, one, to share the standing committee so that the public can know that we're on standing committees. Perhaps when we have the work session, council can decide maybe to move it to our page, um, and not le- leave it here. Uh, but the goal ultimately, yes, is to separate the standing committees and then remove those that have not officially been actually, um, organized. Um, and then council can address those too.
Yeah, even if you just try and.
Yeah, a- add a divider or something for right now. Yeah, absolutely.
Thank you.
No problem.
Yeah. And my input is only that we probably should wait till after Ms. Best find, do the initial Excel sheet to let us know which boards have requirements to add people to a or if, if they themselves are interested in serving on the board. So that when we make, we, that would help us make a decision whether that board can still serve us or not.
Yeah.
Nothing actually would have to happen before at least we get that listing. Is, is April, the first meeting of April, and we have done nothing on our budget. I'm being a devil's advocate, I just don't know if a month really is a time to come back and talk, use a work session for boys and commission, cause it is been delayed and delayed and belabored. But just for consideration, I think we need to get through the budget. We might have more questions or intense information that we have to get through and more meetings to, to be established without you know, interjecting, I mean, interjection is into our, uh,
Uh, the city manager gave out a schedule for the budget. So I'm just gonna offer this, this will make you feel comfortable.
No, I'm not, I'm just giving, I'm just giving.
Yeah, so, so if we do a tentative twenty, the twenty-fifth is a tentative date. Uh, if there is a need to do a work session that will cause us to push that back, then we can do that. But can we at least put it on the calendar tentatively?
Yeah, that, well, that's fine. Yeah.
Okay.
Uh, Madam Chair, I'll pass it back over to you. Um, I'm done.
Thank you, Councilor.
I'm sorry, can you repeat that?
No, I was just saying, let's just do it tentatively and we'll see how, uh, the budget session goes and how Ms. Best goes with her stuff. And then we'll give a report out. If we need to adjust, we adjust, no problem. But, uh, hopefully everyone's open to working on this and we'll just move forward.
I would, I would tend to leap, would like to place it on the date for May twenty-fifth. Um, is there a motion to place this work session for boards and commissions and authority for May twenty-fifth?
We can't do the motion, cause it's the work session. I was gonna add it to the, um, consent agenda.
Oh, you're gonna add it to the consent agenda?
Yes, I think we can't make motions during work sessions.
Okay.
Okay.
Unless it's the consensus and Ms. Robinson says we can go that route.
I don't, uh, Ms. Robinson, can you please, uh, opine?
Your rule states, um, that you don't take action in a work session unless it was advertised as a special meeting. Unless you've got a work session in the middle of a regular meeting, it confuses the issue, so. You know, I, I, I just, I'll defer to council on it because your rule doesn't directly apply based on how you set up your agenda.
Okay.
If we can do it, then I make a motion that we have a tentative work schedule, schedule meeting on the 25th of May um, for a discussion of boards and commissions.
Motion's been made by Councilor Gore, seconded by Mayor Bennett. Discussion, I see two hands, uh, Councilor Pelham and then Councilor Denton.
Oh no, my hand's down, I'm sorry.
Um, Councilor Denton?
Um, I would just like to defer to what, uh, Councilor Pelham said, I agree with her 100%. Our first concern right now, it will be the budget and if all works well, May 25th is fine, but I don't want to nail us to end to a certain date. I would like to wait and see how we're doing and if everything goes well, I'm all for the May 25th. But I don't want to commit. Thank you.
And the motion is for tentative, um, Councilor Denton, so. Um, alright, no other hands, roll call. Ms. Best, can I get roll call?
Sorry, I was muted, um, Councilor Denton?
No.
Councilor Pelham?
Hmm.
Yeah. Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Councilor Randolph?
No.
Councilor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Councilor Gore?
Yes, thank you.
Mayor Bennett, you have five to seven, the motion passes.
Thank you.
I mean, five to two, I apologize, the motion passed.
Thank you. Okay, um, Councilor Gore, if you would, uh, allow me to share my screen with the next item. Thank you. The next item we have on tonight is R1, the Local Choice TLC Annual Health Insurance Renewal. Mister.
Mayor Bennett, we need to open the break of the meeting.
Oh my goodness.
It's okay.
Vice Mayor Parton. Okay, where is, can you see my screen? No. See, share my screen.
Let me see it now, Mayor Bennett.
Ready? I'd like to call the meeting to order, I'd like to welcome visitors this evening, thank you for your patience and, um, for sticking with us. At this time, I would like to ask for Ms. Best to, for a roll call.
Councilor Denton? Councilor Pelham?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Here.
Councilor Randolph?
Here.
Councilor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton?
Here.
Councilor Gore?
Here.
Uh, Mayor Bennett, you have, uh, quorum seven, present, zero absent.
Thank you. At this time, I would like to ask Mr. Charles Dane to lead us in prayer. And following that, um, Councilor Pelham with the pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America.
Madam America, can you hear me?
Yes, sir, thank you.
May let us pray. Heavenly Father, first and foremost, as always, we thank you for the blessings you bestowed upon us individually and as a community. We thank you for all the, the hedge of protection you've given so many of us against the, uh, pandemic, the coronavirus. We ask for continued blessings and continued protection. We ask for you to continue to bless and protect our public safety officials and all of our employees and all of our citizens, Lord. We ask that you bless this meeting so that we do your will, in Christ's name we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, for liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Is there a motion to amend or adopt the regular meeting agenda?
I move that we adopt an amended agenda that has a discussion of the previous Virginia American Water outage under the information slash presentation section.
Second.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Parton, seconded by Councilor Pelham. Ms. Best, do you have that motion?
I'm going to have to ask Vice Mayor Parton to help me out with that, I was not able to write quickly enough. Motion to adopt the agenda?
Yeah, an amended agenda.
Okay.
That has a discussion of the previous Virginia American Water outage under the information slash presentations section.
Okay, do you need me to repeat it, Mayor Bennett?
Yes, please.
Okay. Notice to adopt the amended agen- agenda that has a discussion at previous Virginia American Water
Outage?
Outage under the previous section.
Under the information slash presentation section.
My apologies, information, presentation section, okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor Parton.
Okay. Are there any hands for discussion? Okay, I have one hand, Councilor Gore.
Yes, I just want to have clarity on what is this addition about, Madam Chair?
So, uh, so the, I, well, I guess I could give a little bit of background. So, all the ask is, is to add this into the section and then just to ask, uh, council to, uh, direct the city attorney and city manager uh, to research and make an oral report back to city council at the April 27th meeting, uh, to, you know, to present us with some, uh, legal and business options about the accountability of the Virginia American Water Company for the, uh, incident that happened back in mid-February.
Okay, thank you for that.
Councilor Denton?
Um, I, I'm, I feel that we should have our city manager look into that and report back to council, um, mainly because he has been the contact person with the Virginia American Water Company. And I feel like he certainly be involved in this, in the discussion that is involving the city.
Yes, ma'am, it had, it's for the city attorney and the city manager both to research and to bring a report back to city council in two weeks.
Okay, I see no other hands. Ms. Best, roll call, please.
Councilor Denton?
No.
Councilor Pelham?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Councilor Randolph?
Yeah.
Councilor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Councilor Gore?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett, you have six yes, one no, the motion passes.
Thank you. Moving down to the consent agenda. A motion to amend or adopt the consent agenda?
I move that we adopt the consent agenda.
Second.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Parton, seconded by Councilor Pelham. I see no hands for discussion. Roll call.
Councilor Denton?
Yes.
Councilor Pelham?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Councilor Randolph?
Yes.
Councilor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Councilor Gore?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett, you have seven to zero, the motion passes.
Thank you. Moving down to information and presentation, since the, um, agenda was amended, uh, Vice Mayor Parton, I will turn this section over to you.
Sure, uh, thank you, Mayor Bennett. Um, all that, uh, I'm asking for, uh, and I think, uh, council at the previous meeting when we had a special meeting, uh, kind of talked a little bit about what some of our options were. And I would like, uh, to move to, uh, direct the city manager and the city attorney to work together to research and make an oral report back, uh, to city council at the April 27th meeting regarding the legal and business options available to the city of Hopewell to compel accountability on Virginia American Water for the water outage that occurred here in Hopewell back in mid-February.
Second up.
Motion's been made by Vice Mayor Parton, seconded by Councilor Gore. Um. Discussion. Councilor Gore, Vice Mayor Parton, and then Councilor Denton.
Yes, uh, thank you, Vice Mayor Parton, for putting this on the agenda. Um, if this passes, I do want to put a reminder in that council did ask for certain items from my notes. I know that some counselors asked to see if the credit could be provided. Um, that's one item. The other item was to see about what happened with the $800,000 that was provided to the city, I think a week's notice for the deadline for citizens to apply for. Um, the other ask that we had definitely was for a report out on literally the minute-by-minute and what happened with communications. Those are the biggest notes that I have, I obviously would defer to Vice Mayor Parton for the rest of his information, but I just want to be on record saying that we get follow-up on those items. In particular, I wanted to know what happened with the $800,000 and, uh, what occurred on their end, why they did not correct the media report that was sent to the public. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Parton?
I apologize, I had my hand up by accident.
Councilor Denton?
Um, I'm, I'm not going to say that much, I, I know that it was a bad situation and a lot of us were inconvenienced. But I think most of us that are the people that I have talked to mainly, um, realize these things do happen. And I, well, I just would like to say that, uh, recently I was, um, involved with the city of Hopewell in cleaning up the downtown and a big, big group that wasn't there, helping us clean up the downtown for the employees of the Virginia American Water Company, the operating manager. And they apologized, they said they, they worked hard, they worked long hours trying to get the water back on. And, uh, I appreciated what they did and I thank them for it. I also know they were very instrumental in the, the Redwood Walk and the park, the city park down, downtown, and they have been good partners with the city. And yes, this was a bad situation. But, you know, you, we didn't use that water, so I don't know why we should be, uh, asking for a refund. We never used it because we couldn't get to it. But I just, I just hope we, we, um, are very cautious in what we do. Thank you.
Councilor Pelham?
Yes, well, I supported the, the item ma- mainly because when you, when you're dealing with businesses and government, it goes beyond the fact that you may lack an individual or company or whatever, but in your business mode, you have to get business results. And if every company just had to be nice to, to get a pass at everything, the water outage inconvenience, 22,000 people in this city and giving out two cases or four cases of water could never replace the time and energy and the gas wasted waiting in line for, uh, uh, 24 cases of bottled water, uh, every day. And so, I was, uh, we were out for water and when most of us wouldn't care, mind if we didn't get a credit because we pay our bills consistently. There are still people who are on fixed incomes that, that $10 a day or whatever it costs to get your water done, $2 a day, whatever, when you have seniors on fixed income, every penny counts. And then if you have people who have limited income, they have minimal wages, every penny counts. So, they elect us to look out for them and I think that's one of our duties to do. And so, when the big brother makes an error because maybe they didn't pre-plan or weren't ready for the emergency that had happened before, then citizens should have to, shouldn't have to suffer and not get any recognition or credit so that to say at least my inconvenience, I am really man enough and professional enough to give you what you do for the time and energy that we, 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 uh, put on the, uh, individual citizen. So, I, I hope and pray, before, I believe, I don't know if anyone remembers, but I think we got a credit last time that we, we were out of water, that, that incident happened, but it was a different manager in charge, whether he had the authority or the company bored over him. But I do, I think we got a credit for the time that we were out of water for those days. While they couldn't do the same thing, it's no excuse for it. Thank you.
I don't see any hands, um. Roll call, please.
Councilor Denton?
No.
Councilor Pelham?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett? Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Councilor Randolph?
No.
Councilor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Councilor Gore?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett, you have five yes, two no, the motion passes.
Thank you, I'm going to turn this over to the reports to city manager, Mr. Altman.
Evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. Our first item of regular business this evening is our local choice, or is it referred to as TLC, annual health insurance renewal. This evening, we have Ms. Sears, our HR director, and Ms. Mary Jones on the, on the meeting with us. And at this point in time, I'll turn it over to Ms. Sears and Ms. Jones.
Good evening, Madam Mayor, members of council. She's going to let Mary Jones take the lead.
Good evening, everyone. Will someone be bringing up the presentation?
I stopped. One second. I'm so glad my first name is Patience. You guys are really going to have peace with me tonight. See. Okay. Here it is, but it's taking up the entire, I don't know if you guys can see this. What it looks like for me.
Or if it's easier, I can just share my screen. It's totally up to you. That looks better.
Awesome.
All right, well, as Mr. Altman indicated, it is that time of year again for the employee benefits for the medical, dental, and vision through the local choice to come up for renewal as of July first. Yes, thank you. So you can see the renewal is coming in with a favorable increase of two-point-two percent in comparison to what we've seen with other areas receiving. Couple of things just want to talk about, and we'll be going over some options and recommendations as far as the benefits. I just want to talk real briefly on the renewal and kind of the whys that it's coming in at the two-point-two percent. You know, as we all know, it's been a interesting year at best with the pandemic last year, starting March timeframe. With that, utilization overall has been down as far as benefits when it comes to the medical specifically. And the local choice recognizes that, and as part of that, that they want to recognize that utilization was down. With all of their renewals, the local choice renewals automatically received a decrease of four percent. Which essentially means that your renewal really called for a six-point-two percent increase. But because of the four percent that the local choice credit that they were giving to all their groups because of the lower utilization, it brought it down to the two-point-two percent. Couple of things with that, the what that really means long-term for you all is that as we start the plan year, the new plan year as of July first, twenty-twenty-one, we're really starting at a four percent increase. And, you know, based off of how the group performs and the local choice pool performs, I suspect we'll be faced with a higher, much higher increase next year. You know, I think it'll be higher single digits, but certainly an increase nonetheless. Which is kind of leading into what some of the recommendations that we have, or I should say the recommendation we have on the table. Because I think there's opportunity to maintain employee premiums and not increase them. However, tweak the plan designs a bit, which is something we've been talking about over the past few years to kind of prepare for what might be coming down the path for the future plan year of twenty-twenty-two. So what you see here is we have two options that are up here. One option is basically leaving the plans as is. So option one, you'll see the first three plans are the exact same plans that you offer today. And then keeping the employees pretty much flat to where they are today. Option two is actually the recommendation that we're asking for consideration, which basically you can see it removes that key advantage expanded plan. So what we would be offering, we would continue to offer three plans. One being the high deductible of twenty-eight-hundred plan would remain as is. Then the key advantage two-fifty would remain in place, but we would be bringing in a new option, which would be the key advantage five-hundred. We anticipate the folks that are in the key advantage expanded today will more than likely gravitate or enroll into the two-fifty plan. And, you know, we will probably have some folks, just based off of the out-of-pocket premiums that they have to pay, will gravitate to the five-hundred plan. But we, we, we fully expect that most of your folks on the expanded plan will gravitate to that two-fifty plan. And you can see that that basically kind of keeps them flat. So anybody who's in the two-fifty today, it would, would continue paying the fifty dollars and fifty cents per paid period to remain in that plan. So they won't experience any change or any shift in their premium costs. If you don't go a little bit further. So here, just as a summary of the two options, like I said, the first option is really just keeping benefits as, as they are today. But you can see the impact, you know, so if we don't pass along any of the increase to the employees, the overall increase to the city is about a little over a hundred thousand. And if we, we adjust the plans where we eliminate that key advantage expanded and add the key advantage five-hundred, it brings it to a one-point-five percent increase, which is approximately about fifty-three thousand dollars, again, with the city absorbing that. The next page, thank you. And, and here, all that we're illustrating here is, because you also have folks that are retirees that are not eligible for Medicare. So this is just really illustrating what this would look like for them. So over to the right side of the page, you can see the option one, the first two options are option one, based off of their years of service. And then option two, the two options, again, based off of years of service are highlighted there. So that's, that's would be the impact to those folks based off of what they're currently paying, which is over to the left-hand side of the page. Go to the next, okay, thank you. So one thing that I want to just point out is with the key, you know, eliminating that key advantage expanded and knowing that most of your folks probably would gravitate to that two-fifty, just wanted to illustrate what that means. So what does that mean to them from a a user perspective? So somebody who actually is utilizing the benefits and has out-of-pocket exposure. So you can see their deductibles are going from one hundred for an individual or two hundred for family to two-fifty and five-hundred. The out-of-pocket maximum is currently two thousand, four thousand on the expanded, going to three thousand, six thousand. Copays are adjusting slightly for the primary care physicians, so the PCP. And the specialist copays and urgent care copays are adjusting from twenty-five to thirty-five. And the inpatient facility, you can see is adjusting from three hundred to four hundred, and the ER OR, operating surgeries are going from two-fifty to three-fifty. So there certainly is some additional exposure, which was really part of the reason why it was important to keep their premiums flat. You know, because like I said earlier, you know, one of the things that we really need to make sure that we're planning for is the future plan year, you know, especially next year, you know, there's a lot of unknown factors going into post-COVID. You know, not just the fact of utilization, you know, we fully anticipate utilization is going to increase just by virtue of the fact more and more people are becoming more comfortable and go and seeking services that they hadn't received over the past year. We also don't know some of the long-term effects of COVID, you know, what, what does that mean for the plan? You know, it'll probably be a while before we know that. And then the other thing that we need to take into consideration are, so we have folks who didn't seek services through the pandemic, which some people could have probably easily just kind of self, self-treated themselves and they were fine. But then you also have a segment of your population who maybe should have been seeking services or continuing to seek services from their client, from their positions. Especially if you have folks who had chronic conditions, so someone with diabetes, asthma, heart disease. You know, we don't know the long-term impact for those folks either if they went a period of time where they weren't getting the treatment that they needed or was recommended by their physician. So there's certainly, that is a pretty significant question mark of what that impact will have to the plan going forward as well. So I guess before I move into the new hire eligibility period, any, any questions? Okay. So the new hire eligibility period really is really, really kind of being dictated by the local choice. So the local choice is implementing a technology platform for enrollments on a go-forward basis. And the way the city currently has the waiting period established, so you can see if you're hired the first of the fourteenth, those folks have an effective date of first of the following month. And anybody hired after the fifteenth through the last day of the month, insurance is effective the first month, thirty days of service. This cardinal system that the local choice is going to be using unfortunately, doesn't have the capabilities to accommodate that. So the recommendation is that effective July first that the waiting period be changed to the first of the month after hire date for, for folks going forward. Next slide. And then the, the final piece is, so one thing that we did is we did an analysis of the voluntary worksite benefits that your folks have access to. And what we discovered is there were quite a few people, as you can see, most of your people are participating with Aflac. And we have actually twenty-one folks who are participating with non-Aflac. Which it gets really confusing for folks, you know, when they, when you have multiple vendors who are in there trying to share what their choices are, it can get confusing to employees. So one of the recommendations that we had was to consolidate that. And knowing that most of your folks are sitting with Aflac today, it just made sense to consolidate everything with Aflac. That doesn't mean we're going to take anything away from the folks that are in non-Aflac policies. They will continue to have the option to keep those plans in place. However, what will be different is they will now be billed at home and can pay their premiums themselves versus it being done by a payroll deduction. So that was a recommendation just to kind of help streamline things a little bit and make it less confusing for folks as they were enrolling in these products. Jennifer, anything you want to add?
No, not really. I covered everything really well.
Any questions from council?
I do have a question.
Yes.
You, you were speaking on next year's may, did you say double or just go up significantly?
We anticipate it's probably going to go up. Probably, if I had to guess, and again, I don't, I don't have a crystal ball, but if I had to throw a dart at it right now, I would say you're going to come in at the high single digits, pretty close to a ten percent increase if I had to guess. Because like I said, you know, it's, it's a great thing this year that local choice recognizes the lower utilization over the past year. And they're giving you that decrease now, but unfortunately, what that means on the back end is that you're basically starting the new plan year with a four percent increase out of the gate. So knowing that and knowing that utilization is more than likely going to pick up, and there's some unknown factors that we don't know how, you know, like, like I said, how COVID's going to impact utilization and so forth on a go-forward basis. I, I anticipate it's not going to be as favorable as it is, as it has been the previous years and this year.
Okay, and are we in a contract with you guys or certainly at the time, or?
It's, it's a year-to-year contract with local choice.
Okay. Okay, that's, thank you.
You're welcome.
I, I guess, are we just jumping in?
Yeah, Counselor Gore?
Thank you, Ms. Jones. So P, you're racking off of what Counselor Pelham asked. I think if I heard you correctly, you said that our usage was lower, correct?
Yes.
So is there discussion about providing some additional incentives for locales that have a lower usage? Again, due to COVID, you would think that maybe perhaps there would be an increase. And if the thought processes and moving forward in the future, utilization may go up, but shouldn't the same consideration be given to the fact that we went through COVID for a year and the utilization went down?
I'm not sure I, I'm following you, I apologize.
No, it's okay. Are there any discussions about incentives or additional resources for when locales have a lower usage, especially due to COVID? If I understood you correctly, and correct me if I am wrong. If I heard you correctly, I think you, when you answered Counselor Pelham, you said perhaps it will go up because of the unforeseen, you know, what the future may hold due to
Right.
But then the thought process I have would be, wouldn't it would be reversed because we paid an increase last year for health insurance. We're in COVID now within a year, right? March was the when COVID really hit the US. And if we had a decrease in services, wouldn't there be some incentives for locales that have done that?
So the, the, the short answer is unfortunately, no. You know, that's not necessarily how the, when the underwriters and actuaries are pricing this. You know, because, you know, one thing to take into consideration is with, when you're with a local choice, you're in part of what they refer to as a pool. So it really depends on how the overall pool is running, not just specifically the city's utilization. So as a whole, the expectation is utilization is going to increase significantly from what it did previously. And when, when they're looking at renewals, they do kind of look backwards, but they're really looking more forward on what they anticipate is going to happen. So, you know, and that's why I say, you know, the, the plan year, for all intents and purposes, we really, we're kind of going to end up giving back that four percent that they're giving us right now. Because that will be factored in on a go-forward basis just because of the, the pool itself is just going to increase significantly from versus what we've seen over the last twelve months, twelve really more than that at this point, twelve, thirteen months at this point.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I don't see any other hands. Is there is there a motion to approve? Is there a motion? Okay. Does is there a motion for city council to approve option two plans and rates as recommended by One Digital? And the revised new hire eligibility waiting period as required by TLC for the upcoming plan year?
Madam Chair, if possible, I'd like to ask the HR directors some questions.
Sure.
Typically, every year, we kind of like to ask what other options were considered and why is this typically being recommended to us, especially if we're looking at doing an increase again? So can Ms. Sears provide us with a little bit of backup and information also for the So can Ms. Sears provide us with a little bit of backup information also for the public that's watching this?
Okay, I just didn't see any other hands, so.
Thank you.
Well, thank you for that.
Oh, that wasn't directed towards you. I'm sorry. That, the way I worded it may have come off that way, but it wasn't. It was just.
Definitely. Thank you.
Yes, so several options were considered. I think it was like seven to nine scenarios that One Digital put together for Mr. Altman and I. All of which had various different implications, none of which had a lesser impact to the city financially. So that's how we narrowed it down to what the options that we presented to you all. It was an option that allowed the city to save money going from the 50,000, I'm sorry, to the, from the 100,000 to the 53,000, I believe. And to keep employees flat. Most of the other scenarios, either the outcome was a significant larger increase for the city or an increase for the employees. So this was kind of the balance. And I'm sorry, what was the other question you had?
No, that was it. You answered it. I was just trying to figure out, one, did you solicit any other proposals and then, or options? And then two, why did you recommend this one from your perspective?
So you. Oh, yeah. There were several options, yes.
Councilor Gore, did you have anything else?
Yep, thank you.
Okay, Councilor Denton. Councilor Denton, your mic is muted.
Sorry about that. Could I ask Ms. Jones or Ms. Sears? How many of the employees are, are affected by the key advantage expanded 500?
I believe there were approximately 63 active employees.
Yeah.
In the expanded plan.
There, yes, it was 60, 63 in the expanded that we anticipate will go to the 250.
So most of the employees are actually already in the 250 plan.
Right.
Yeah. I would just like beforehand and make a motion that we go with option two to remove the key advantage expanded and add the key advantage 500.
Second. Motion's been made by Counselor Denton, seconded by Counselor Randolph. Ms. Bass, were you able to, can you restate that motion? We didn't mention restated.
Yeah, it's true. Ms. Bass, can you hear me?
Yes, I'm sorry. The motion was to remove the key advantage expand and add the key advantage 500?
Yes.
Okay. So that was the motion, Mayor Bennett.
Thank you. The floor is open for discussion. Counselor Pelham. Counselor Pelham, your mic is muted.
Sorry, sorry. Mister City Manager, so this had just come out of general fund monies, correct?
Yes, ma'am. This, this, these funds come out of, this is for next year's budget.
Right.
It'll be, it would be part of our general fund budget. And the recommendation, one of the parts of the recommendations, it will save the city some premium increase.
Okay.
But we, as, as you, as you questioned, our concern with part of the option with removing the key advantage expanded and moving towards the 500 is looking towards next year and that renewal. And the feeling is that keeping that key advantage expanded plan, we would see a significant increase in the renewal portion for that plan. So this year's action is saving us money this year and hopefully will also help defer some cost as we move to next year because we'll have a year in that 500 plan if anyone uses, utilizes that plan.
Right, and did you hear from any of the old, not, this is the old, the retirees?
I have not heard from any of the retirees, no ma'am.
Okay, great. Okay.
Thank you, Counselor Pelham. Counselor Denton, you have your hand raised. Is that from before?
Thank you.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Palom?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Randolph?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Gore?
Yes. Yes.
Mayor Bennett, you have seven to zero motion passes.
Thank you. Ms. Sears, you raised your hand. Did you have, did you want to?
Yes, ma'am. There was actually a second piece to that as well as the new higher eligibility.
Okay.
Another item that council would need to make a decision on.
Okay.
Go, go back down. I'm sorry. You just passed it.
So the, the last page.
Was it in the recommendation?
Right there.
Yes, ma'am. It was on the CAF as part of the.
I'm gonna go, I'm, are, is, can I go to the CAF?
It, if you scroll up one there, right there.
Right here.
Right there. And this is what's required of the city by TLC and their new software platform. We don't necessarily have a choice in, in making this move. And Ms. Sears and I discussed several ways to try to limit its impact on our employees. And we think this is probably the best way to do that, particularly with regard to new hires.
Counselor Pelham, you have your hand raised.
I forgot to.
Okay, Counselor Denton? Okay, Counselor Denton, you have your hand up, and then Counselor Gore?
Okay, I was going to make the motion that they. In addition to the rate that they hired, if you're hired from the first through the 14th, insurance effective will be the first of the following month. If you're hired the 15th through the last day of the month, the insurance effective would be the first of the month following 30 days of service. And this would be affecting 7/1/21.
Madam Mayor.
Yes.
We actually need what is written under the effective 7/1.
Change, change the first of the month after hire date.
Yes, ma'am.
Oh, I had that.
Second. Ms. Bass, are you clear, were you able to get a clear understanding of the motion that was stated?
I believe so, but Counselor Denton, if you can just correct me if I missed something. Motion in addition to the rate, if hired in the first through the 14th is in effect the first of the month. If hired the.
Following month.
The following, following month.
Of the following month, yeah.
Okay, and if hired the 15th through the end of the month, the following 30 days of the first month hired.
So. The motion needs to just be that we change the, the revised new higher eligibility waiting period is changed to the first of the month after the hire date effective July 1 of 2020. We don't need to have, because currently, you read what we had currently, but what we're changing to is just. That would be the motion.
Okay.
So, but, Mr. Altman, repeat that one more time, please. I'm sorry.
The motion would need to be to, to adopt the revised new higher eligibility waiting period, which we are changing to the first of the month after the hire date, effective July 1, 2021.
Okay. Okay.
That motion's been made by Counselor Denton, seconded by Counselor Randolph. Counselor Gore? You have your hand raised?
Yes, the city manager kind of answered my question because it was, wasn't clear with the motion. With, and also the way it's written, so no matter what day you come in, the first of the preceding month is, I mean, the following month is when your insurance will be effective. So if I come in on the 15th of June, July 1, it's effective. April 7th, May 1st is effective. Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
All right, thank you.
I don't, I see no other hands. Roll call.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Palom?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Randolph?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Count, Vice Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Gore?
Yes, please.
Mayor Bennett, the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you. Is there a motion to extend the meeting to 10:00 PM?
Tell them.
Second.
Motion's been made to extend the meeting to 10:00 PM by Counselor Denton, seconded by Vice Mayor Parton. I don't see any, oh, I see two hands for discussion, Vice Mayor Parton and Counselor Pelham. Vice Mayor Parton?
I was just going to make a motion to extend the meeting.
Okay, Counselor Pelham? Your mic is muted, Counselor Pelham.
Is it possible that the city attorney can come up with a rule that we can change our rule to meet up to 10 or 10:30? And then someone can make a motion to, to adjourn instead of always extending the meeting?
Ms.
Can I add that to the, can I add that to the motion?
Ms. Robinson?
No.
That was already part of a previous motion that we made, and it never got approved.
Well, I'm saying, can I make, have an amendment to this motion? That the city attorney make up just our rule to include up to a certain hour? So that we don't have to stop and extend a meeting every meeting in redundant.
Okay, and do you, when do you want her to bring it back to council?
Yes.
Okay.
I mean, they would have, is, I don't know.
I, I don't agree with that. I mean, I made the motion. And I don't agree with it because we don't always start at the same time.
That's the purpose of saying it can extend up to 10 o'clock every night unless someone wants to adjourn early and gives the votes to adjourn early.
Well, if you started at 5:30, we wouldn't end at 9:30.
We always extend it after 9:30.
So we can definitely give the city attorney, ask her to bring that back to council to adjust the rules and we can vote on that. But at this time, the motion on the floor is to extend the meeting until 10 o'clock. And I see no other hands for discussion. Roll call, please.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Palom?
No.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Randolph? Counselor Randolph?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton?
Yes.
Counselor Gore?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett, you have six to one. The motion passes.
Thank you. Item R2, Ms. Sears?
Yes, ma'am. All right, so R2 is talking about a, in regards to a fellowship program for transitioning veterans. This is something that Mr. Altman asked me to take a closer look at and to see if it's something that the city would like to participate in. And I do think it's something that the city could benefit from and partner with DVS in rolling out. So the Hire Vets Now Fellowship Program is basically a six to 12-week internship program. We would need to work with, HR would work with departments to identify positions that have skill sets that would be applicable to transitioning, transitioning service members. And then once they're identified, we have to go through a process, like an application process for the fellowship program and work with them to get everything set up. So there is no financial support needed from the city. Individuals that are in the program, they're still considered active DoD employees. However, they're just kind of working at the city during this, during this transition time. So attached in the agenda packet was a presentation about the program that Ms. Jones provided to us for review and consideration. So I think we can get it implemented probably in the fall of this year. So tonight, we're asking for council, council to approve the recommendation for us to move forward with the program.
No move.
What? Second? Please, I wanted to do the motion.
All right, you're not a veteran. I am.
Put it on the agenda, but you can have, thank you for your service, Counselor Pelham.
Oh, my goodness. The motion. Okay. For, for minute purposes and for documentation purposes, I would like the motion to be stated for the record, please.
Okay. All right, put that sheet back up there.
Okay.
I don't have any.
Ms. Pelham, give me a second. My computer is acting really crazy this evening. Here we go.
Make the recommendation to the city administration, approve moving forward with the planning and preparation for the Veterans to Hire Program Fellowship Program.
Okay. So there's a motion, Ms. Bass, that Counselor Pelham is make a motion for city council to approve moving forward with the planning and preparation for the Hire Vets Now Fellowship Program. Okay. Implementation. Okay. Right, Ms. Sears?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. The motion was made by Counselor Pelham, seconded by Counselor Gore. Counselor Denton, your hand is up for a discussion, and then after that is Counselor Gore.
Did you, did you call on me?
Yes.
I didn't hear you. Yeah, just a couple of questions. I think this is a good program. But I noticed when I was reading the packet that they approved employers. that they approved employers who are mostly all from the town or northern Virginia area. Um, has anybody, do you know, Ms. Sears, has anyone, um, talked to Fort Lee or the Defense General Supply Center? Or any of them to see if they would be interested in working with us on such a program?
No, um, I think I made an assumption that since we're neighbors with Fort Lee, um, and I do know that they have, uh, well, they used to have the, um, office. They, it's changed names a couple of times of the office that handed, um, helping, um, service members transition out. When Mr. Bragg was here, he and I talked about it a couple of times, actually. Um, so I know they have an office in those services on Fort Lee, so I made the assumption that that's where they would be. From Fort Lee, so, but no, I have not made any direct contacts with them.
Uh, I guess, um, I would like maybe to defer this till someone has an opportunity to talk to Fort Lee to see if this would benefit them and if they would support it.
Uh, Counselor Denton.
Sure, yes, sir.
Uh, to follow up, we, we haven't reached out, what we were, we, this was part of, this program here was part of a number of programs that were suggested and we, we reviewed. And this was the one that we felt, uh, most confident that we could implement. So we haven't reached out to Fort Lee yet, but we feel that, given our proximity to Fort Lee, the city's continued relationship with Fort Lee and then, and that, the, the need and the knowledge that there are, uh, constantly service members transitioning out of, uh, out of their respective branch of the military. This will be an opportunity for us to continue that relationship with Fort Lee. Certainly we'll have to, we'll have to reach out, uh, but we wanted to see what council's feeling was before we expended a lot of energy trying to establish a relationship about the program. Uh, if council was willing to move forward with the fellowship program, then we will then make those contacts and move forward. I think, uh, and I can't remember completely, uh, there is reason for the, the listing in the, in the the presentation of regarding the, the tidewater communities, but I can't remember correctly. Um, and perhaps, um, Ms. Gore may have some information. I think knowing that, uh, part of what she does in, in the world is working with, uh, the E three program and others with regard to veteran services. So, uh, she may be able to provide us a little bit more information, but I, there seems to me, and I can't, I can't put my finger on it right, right off bat as to the reasoning behind mentioning those particular, uh, employers. Uh, and I know that there's a, I think, and I, and Ms. Gore can correct me if I'm wrong, but I think this really program came out of, uh, the Navy and you have a large presence in tidewater with, uh, Norfolk Naval Station there. And that would be why that really is prominent because it came from the, the Navy side of the House. Although all branches are able to serve, it came out, the program came out of the Navy. And that's why we have that mention of, uh, all the tidewater related businesses there. Uh, and Ms. Gore can, can tell me if I'm right or wrong, but I think that's the reason.
Well, if, I mean, I think this is a great program. But is, is it something just Hopewell would want to do? Is it what we want to talk with Prince George Petersburg? Uh, seems to me that it is a good program and we'd want to get more involved. Maybe I'm, I'm wrong, but it just seems like there's a big opportunity here to, to help our service people. And as they say, the more the merrier.
E- exactly. And I think right now, I, and I don't believe there's any, any jurisdiction participating in our area with Fort Lee or Dispense General Supply Center. So we, we would be kind of blazing the trail, but certainly, I think if we get involved and can show some success, then that then creates an opportunity for other jurisdictions to become involved. And ultimately, you could look at how this might be something that you kind of, and not necessarily strictly from a workforce development perspective, but kind of from that wind, that, that vein, that viewpoint of here's an opportunity to develop a workforce pipeline of people to our community or, or to industry and businesses within our community to provide that opportunity for transitioning vet, uh, veterans to come out and stay in the area. Uh, some are going to go home wherever that home may be, but we know that there are a lot of retirees that were stationed at Fort Lee in this region, and this provides us another opportunity to get them here. And I think really, uh, for us, and the way I'm looking at it, it may provide us a gateway into, uh, future employees that come in and whether they work, say, uh, in P D or fire or finance or wherever it may be, there may be an, uh, an opportunity to, for us to get, uh, a very qualified individual here through, uh, the beginning of this program. So I, I personally think, uh, and professionally believe that we really need to do all we can to support Fort Lee. Uh, and this is just a small step in that direction. And for me, he kind of the key to this program was it didn't cost us anything. So, uh, the employee remains a D O D employee, continues to be paid, paid by D O D while they're in the program. Uh, and we, you know, they get some experience in our side of the world that may pique an interest, whether they want to be in local government or, uh, a different form, but i- it's an opportunity to continue that relationship.
Okay, thank you very much. I agree with you a hundred percent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I see, um, Counselor Gore, Ms. Sears, and then Counselor Pelham.
All right, thank you. So, uh, to answer the question, Mr. Altman is correct. The program started with the Navy M O U in tidewater, which is why that is the prominent companies that are being displayed right now. But as he said, it's open to all service branches to be able to participate because it is a D O D Department of Defense school bridge program. Um, that list is actually currently being updated with new membership. Um, but we haven't finished, the, the staff hasn't finished updating it. To, we, so I did the disclaimer before, I do work for Department of Defense, Department of Veteran Services for Virginia. Um, we were provided new population numbers for Virginia actually about two weeks ago. So right now, Virginia has over seven hundred and twenty-one thousand veterans. Uh, we have a little bit more demographics that I can share with council. Um, but we have the, the market here. One of the reasons why this is critical because in central Virginia, we don't really have a strong, uh, committee or group working on veteran issues. Um, if you look around the state, Northern Virginia, tidewater, um, have really strong, uh, committees that work with issues past, meeting monthly or quarterly to talk about veteran issues. So to Mr. Altman's point, Hopewell can lead the way in this in the region. Um, and I'm really happy that they, Mr. Altman and Ms. Sears support this. Um, to answer the question about, uh, other localities joining us, the way the Hire Vets Now program is established, the, the certified employer has to do the application. So even if we were to join forces and do something, every single individual locality, we need to go through the same process. And then a, a cohort or something like that would need to be approved by Ms. Jones. Um, so truthfully, it's meant for individual partnerships. So Hopewell is doing the right thing, uh, for the process that Ms. Sears is following to establish our own pipeline. The last point that was raised about, um, recruiting transitioning service members, um, the Virginia Transition Assistance Program, also known as V T A P, they work directly with veterans that are transitioning. Um, well, they work with veterans and transitioning service members and military spouses. Uh, if a program is approved, um, through Ms. Jones, then V T A P will help Ms. Sears, um, and city staff recruit, um, transitioning service members to apply for the, the applications. Um, they have access to those who are transitioning out of the military. They also have relationships with Fort Lee and the answer was T A P. That is the group that does transitioning services on Fort Lee. So they will connect Ms. Sears to those resources, um, to get it established. So I hope council supports this tonight. We will definitely be a game changer, uh, for Hopewell and really show our support to Fort Lee. And as Mr. Altman said, um, he can share with the other managers, administrators, and hopefully they can do it. The last thing I would share is, um, I think all but two, one of our localities in our region that meet with the Military C M C group quarterly are all V three certified. So, um, that was the effort done to try to promote our region, work on workforce development. And that's also something that the workforce office will be focusing on is, uh, utilizing our service providers to focus on veteran employment as well because they are federal wheel of dollars that we could be using. So thank you, Ms. Sears, for the research. I'm glad you support this as well, Mr. Altman.
Thank you, Counselor Pelham.
Oh, oh, yes, well, uh, one connection in the local area, uh, is Petersburg, they do work with vets. I don't know, um, it. With that organization, just in case a soldier doesn't know, maybe they could relay information to us once we establish, providing this, but I hope, I'm sure passed, but they do work with veterans every day and, and even settle in helping them with, with resources. So it's not just in Northern Virginia. We had, we had an opportunity to work with them, but I think whatever council was voted it down to go into a partnership with Petersburg, but from what I understand, they do a great job in helping the veterans in this area and they bore that cost by themselves.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Denton, you still have your hand raised?
I'm sorry.
No, fine. Okay, I don't see any other hands for discussion. Roll call, please.
Counselor Denton.
Yes.
Counselor Pelham.
Yes.
Mayor Bennett.
Yes.
Counselor Randolph.
Yes.
Counselor Holloway.
Yes.
Vice Mayor Parton.
Yes.
Counselor Gore.
Yes.
Mayor Bennett, you have seven to zero, motion passes.
Thank you. Okay, we'll move down to the C Rs for this evening. We will be, um, handing this over to Ms. Pelham. Roll of the Vice Mayor.
Well, yeah, I put this on the agenda, uh, way back. I think the issue was when, uh, I passed, it was the mayor, we, we voted, I believe, to pass a lot of responsibility on to the Vice Mayor. And I don't know, um, that have to be reinstituted or re-voted on or should it be in that way as well? So I didn't get a chance to talk to our city attorney or anyone else. I just need to think that we need to either rescind that vote or reconsider it or whatever we need to do or let it play out to be that the mayor takes the role that the Vice Mayor took during the previous mayor position. Something has to be done to make it consistent or change it back to the norm. Uh, could you so advise, Madam Attorney?
I'm, I'm happy to comment on it if, uh, that's okay with the chair. Do you hear Bennett?
Yes, please.
Okay. So the, the, the actions that I recall council taking in under the previous, uh, mayor was a transfer of supervisory responsibility relative to the clerk and the preparation of the agenda. Am I? Are, are we, are we referring to the same actions?
Yes.
Okay, so I think you can approach it in two different ways. Since, since the new mayor has been elected, council adopted changes to rule. The rule over the agenda. I'm finding the specific number for the record. If you give me one second. So back in February, council changed rule three oh three. And in so doing, the action that it took previously, assigning the responsibility of the agenda was effectively changed by that vote to change rule three oh three. So that takes care of part of your question. Now with respect to council's action, previous action, which assigned the responsibility of this, sort of the designated supervisor, if you will, liaison. So I want to be clear on that point. The liaison, liaison for supervisory purposes of the clerk to the Vice Mayor, that is an action that needs to be undone if council wants to change it.
You asking me?
No, I'm, 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 I'm staying, I'm making a statement.
Okay.
The change to rule three oh three substantively addresses the question on whether council has to take another action to deal the assignment on the agenda. That's been done. But nothing has been done to deal with transferring sort of the oversight responsibilities uh, on the clerk's office from the Vice Mayor back to the chair or to anyone else. And I want to be clear in saying that council didn't make the Vice Mayor the supervisor of the clerk. The mayor position always just served as a function, as a liaison function for the body. So, but that, that is what needs to be undone if that's the wish of council going forward.
Right. Well, I mean, I just, uh, I don't have a feeling either way. I guess the two parties that's in a position. I give them a space to decide which, which way they want to go, but I just wanted something to be on record to either continue the same or, or change it back. So I think that's appropriate. And that's, I put it on the agenda for discussion and where do we go from here is is up to the council. And I would ask that the mayor and Vice Mayor have lean on in their opinion on it.
Okay, um. There's two hands up for discussion. Uh, Counselor Randolph and then Counselor Denton.
Um, my understanding, I was not on council at the time, but, uh, the previous council from this council changed, there was also a change done at that point in time. And my understanding was that it was due to a personality conflict with that mayor and that clerk at the time. And so the, uh, Vice Mayor, uh, Gore at that time took over the responsibilities. The second time that it happened with this council, it again was a personality conflict that this council then gave the duties to the Vice Mayor, um, for the same reason that it had happened in the previous council. And that it was not a consistent change, but a very pointed change due to personality issues. And so, uh, if the attorney still sees that we need to do something different, but I felt like with the new, uh, mayor, Vice Mayor in, that it didn't automatically stay with the Vice Mayor, it went back to. But if we need to vote on that, then I'm okay to do with that too. But my feeling is it was very specifically done in those two instances just to relieve tension between different personalities and how to get things, uh, done. And, uh, maybe Ms. Counselor Pelham, you can speak to that in the first instance better than I, since you were on council at that time. Thanks.
Counselor Denton and Counselor Gore. Counselor Denton and Counselor Gore?
Um, yeah, I can, I can remember the same thing um as. As Counselor Randolph said, it was done, um, I was, well, four years ago. And it was, it, it didn't start out that way, it didn't end up that way in a few year period. Same thing happened on the last two years, started out, then it ended up at that point. If we need to change that back normally. Uh, then I would make a motion that we revert it back the way it initially.
I can't hear her.
I ain't hear her.
I would, can you hear me now?
Yes.
I would make a motion if this is necessary. To revert back to the way the charter is written. That it is responsibility of the mayor to work with the City Court.
I'll second it.
May, may I be heard, please?
Ms. Robinson?
Thank you. Um, there, there are a couple of points. First of all, the context for the motion, I think. Um, was, was clear at the time council took action. Unfortunately, your motion. Was not precise enough to cause a reversion app after the change in personnel. So yes, there must be something to undo the transfer of that responsibility to the Vice Mayor. Secondly, and more importantly, the, the, the charter doesn't speak to the. Chair's role or the mayor's role relative to the clerk's office. What the charter has a aligned is the responsibilities of the mayor or the presiding chair. To preside over the meetings and as, as a function of that. There was a great deal of contact in collaboration that should have occurred with the clerk's office. But that is where the contact um sort of results. It's not from. Express language in the charter saying the mayor has the direct supervisory role. Or anything functioning relative to that with the clerk's office. So. I, since that made its way into the, to the motion, that would be incorrect and not really responsive to. The issue that has been raised by Counselor Pelham, and I wanted that to be on the record. Thank you.
Okay, I will call my motion.
What can you re?
No.
Was that a question to me?
Yeah, I was saying, what can you reword the motion to fit the uh. Give us some help.
I, I don't want to step out into that space because it was sort of a conditional motion. As it was phrased, if we must, if we must. So I don't know what the intent of the motion really is. If it's to revert them um, the decision of the council. Or to take back the transfer of authority of the Vice Mayor relative to supervising the clerk's office. I think that's pretty straightforward, but if it was intended to do something else, I can't speak to that. So I'll just defer to Counselor Denton, but you know, the sort of incorporating. Information from the charter that wasn't really in the charter, I needed to go on record to say we can't really. Have that motion because it would be factually incorrect.
Counselor Gore?
Yes, yes, thank you. Um, just for the public's knowledge. The first shift happened at the request of the mayor. To pass over duties to the Vice Mayor, and I was the Vice Mayor at the time. Um, and that is documented in the record and also in our emails with council. Um, so council did not just arbitrarily make that decision. The mayor requested it. Um, the second time, it was council who made that change for various reasons. Um, and it was uh enforced as, as if it was supervisory. Which is why this was a concern. Um. Since, and you know, the conversations at the time were, you know, we can point back to different discussions that. Uh, the clerk doesn't answer to one person. It's a council appointee and we should all have access. We are a team, all these other different comments. Um, and the charter doesn't speak to it, which is why I was left with only chairing the meetings. Um, I did try to seek to try to clean this up so that way anyone beyond me would not have to uh deal with the. Um, um, political climate or either just insurgency with the Chair does. So I asked for it to be discussed in our strategic plan. I put it on the agenda for council to cite clearly what they want the Chair to do. Um, I even asked for a legislative change so that way we can put something in writing to make it very clear. Um, what, what the expectation was. Um, I think this is probably a, another conversation to talk about that. And again, this is just to clean it up for future councils, not in relation to anything else, nothing other than that. So I don't want anyone to read into this or try to um, uh, mix up my words or my intention. So I want to be very clear. Um, but to address the issue that I understand to still be the case, we just simply need a motion to rescind the instruction to have the Vice Chair. Um, provide oversight supervision of the clerk's office and that goes away. And according to our charter and how we've been operating, there shouldn't be, there shouldn't be any issues with how we proceed moving forward. So that would be my motion, if I understand correctly, Ms. Robinson, as to a step that we can take.
Can you say it again, please?
Uh, to rescind, uh, I guess a form, maybe rescind may not be the right word, but I'll defer to Ms. Robinson. Um, to rescind the previous action to have the Vice Mayor oh, provide oversight and supervise the city clerk's office.
No, she withdraw her motion.
Review her motion. Um, so Ms. Robinson, can you please correct me if, if that is not the, the way I should properly word it? But hopefully you get the intent of what I'm trying to do, Ms. Robinson.
Robinson, your hand is raised.
Yes, ma'am. Um, it's, rescind would be the wrong term since that is a separate action. But I would, they just transfer the responsibility back to. That away from the Vice Mayor, and if you guys had it soundly vested in the mayor before. You can say transfer it from the Vice Mayor back to the mayor, or just transfer it from Vice Mayor back to council.
I would just say for right now, answer from the Vice Mayor back to council, and I, again, I think that there should be future conversations about. What the role is of the Chair and Mayor moving forward. So again, not for anyone to misuse. Misuse my words, my intention or my goal. Um, I think there needs to be clarity around that and, and again, this stemming from um past experiences. That I have put this on the agenda, so I'm not trying to point fingers at anyone or try to say anything about, bad about anyone in leadership right now. So I want to be very clear with that. Um, so the motion would be to uh, I think you said undo.
Transfer.
Transfer um oversight and supervision of the clerk's office back to council.
Second.
Motion has been made by Counselor Gore to transfer. The supervision.
Supervision of the clerk's office back to council.
Mayor back to council.
From Vice Mayor.
Yes, and.
Back to council and has been seconded by Counselor Pelham.
And to be clear, uh, again, this is no, no reflection on how things have been operating. I think they're fine. I haven't had any issues or anything. So I don't want anyone to feel that this is directed towards anyone at all.
And.
My turn.
Miss, Miss Best, you have, um, were you clear on the motion?
Yes, to um, transfer the oversight and supervision of the city clerk's office. Back to city council from the Vice Mayor.
Yes. Um. There's two hands for discussion. Counselor Pelham, then Counselor Denton?
I think, I think it's appropriate to say council because the mayor is. Reflective of the council in her, in the position as mayor. Whenever we normally had something to say, the mayor would take it on to the city clerk or the city attorney. And was the voice for council. So I think that is the right verbiage and not to say exactly to the mayor is. It doesn't matter. The mayor's going to default to it anyway. We'll default with the responsibility. Is what I seem like, that I understand, so.
Like the same, I mean, your same situation.
Counselor Denton?
Um, respectfully, uh, counsel told, I do disagree. Um, I think what is intended isn't, if you don't say it, we lose track of it. And yes, there have been some issues back in the past. And I really feel that if we don't put it down in black and white, we're going to have problems. And whoever our city clerk is, they're going to have to, they're be, they will be being put in a spot. And I do not think it's fair. So I would, I mean, before. The mayor kind of coordinated the work. She has to have work on the agenda. And she's working with the city manager, he or she. And I will, I would like to say, I believe between the mayor and the Vice Mayor. They have been working together and it's worked very well. I don't think they've had, I don't know of any problems. I'd say a little bit, but I would like to um. I just disagree with the wording. I think it should be the mayor. Thank you.
Counselor Randolph?
Thank you. Um, I'm gonna have to agree with uh, Counselor Denton. We've had problems with this council and uh, some of the issues. That's why we had to take a vote previously. And change some of it, and I agree that it has to be more specific. So that it is uh, clear on who should be. Uh, in that position to work with the clerk. And when the mayor and Vice Mayor can't get along and, and share the duties. Um, that the mayor is then able to allow, you know, work together. But when that's not capable, it ends up being a mess. And I would rather us not get into that mess again. So I appreciate it, but. I have to request that it be more specific as well. Thanks.
Thank you. I see no other hands. Roll call, please.
Counselor Denton?
No.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Randolph?
No.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pardon?
Yes.
Counselor Gore?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett, you have five to two. The motion passes.
Thank you. Moving down to CR two, um, I do not have the time. My time is not correct on my. On my computer. Um, Ms. Best.
Nine fifty five.
Fifty five.
Nine fifty five?
Yes.
All right, is there a, um, can we just go through this one? See CR two? Um, purchase and utilize Munis software? Um. Counselor. Uh huh. Go ahead. You want to make a motion?
No, um, the presentation was brought to council earlier this year. I think in January or early February about this particular software that was identified. Um, and looked into, and at that point in time, I brought it to council to let them know what was going on. And that the Director of IT, Dr. Manker, had looked into it, found that. Munis now had a module that we could use. And um, Dr. Manker, is there anything further you want to let uh, council know? And how much this is going to cost and any other details that you were going to give tonight? Uh, it just, I guess now we, we're now out of time again.
Um, no problem. The, just to keep it brief, the cost is two thousand dollars a year. It's actually a Munich code module. We have several um, different modules that the clerk, the clerk's office um, can use. Um, I was just kind of really waiting until we have a permanent person in, in, in place. Uh, where I can hand off um, with some of this information to. But we do, as uh, Counselor Gore stated earlier, we do have the boards and commissions on the website. It's just kind of in a, you know, a flat um, presentation. I think this, the, the software that you and I uh, took the time to look into will, will help uh, manage the boards. And commission uh, better through uh, more or less a portal um, like feature. And so um, if council approves this um, cost tonight. Uh, we should be in position to extend our current um, Munich code. Software and abilities to um, this portal. And it will provide you guys with those uh, features that you were discussing earlier today. Such, such as online uh, board application and form. I did have a demonstration. Um, ready for you guys today, but in essence of time, I'm asking the council to. Um, vote on the two thousand dollars a year costs for the software. And um, once we have onboarded all the information. Then we can go through a training and a demonstration for each of the council members.
Thank you, Council, uh, Dr. Manker. I'd like to make a motion for council to purchase and utilize the. Munich code, Munis software module for boards and commissions uh, to uh. That's it. That's the whole motion, sorry.
Second that.
Motion made by Counselor Randolph, seconded by um, Counselor Denton, up for discussion. Counselor Gore, you have your hand raised?
No, I, I support this. I'm glad Dr. Manker was working on this.
Roll call, please.
Counselor Denton?
Yes.
Counselor Pelham?
Yes.
Mayor Bennett?
Yes.
Counselor Randolph?
Yes.
Counselor Holloway?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Pardon?
Yes.
Counselor Gore?
Yes.
Yay.
Mayor Bennett, the motion passes seven to zero.
Thank you, Dr. Manker.
All, um, so we have like maybe.
You have, it's nine fifty nine, Mayor Bennett.
Okay.
We adjourn the meeting.
Okay. All in, oh.
During right now.
Good night, y'all.
Bye.